So it is six, six thirty-one and I will call this planning board meeting to order of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. So we will begin with the roll and let's call the roll and state whether you're present. John, I am present. Rebecca?
I'm here.
Phil is excused. Neil?
Present.
Mike Ahern?
Here.
Mark is also excused. Susan? And alternate members, Zach Terrell of the Select Board. Mike Bouchard, he is excused. Oh, I forgot Mark did not. And Peter. And?
Present.
Present, thank you. And Guy. Alright, so. Peter, I will seat you as a voting member for this evening. And. Okay. So I did just wanna, before we move on, just reiterate the importance of the commitment to the Planning Board and of attendance to the Planning Board. I know we all have busy, difficult lives and it can be difficult sometimes and I'm certainly completely understanding. And at the same time, I just wanna reiterate the importance of that commitment and making certain to be present as often as possible. Alright, so next up on the agenda or first up is the review of minutes from our previous meeting of July twenty-first. And if you all have had a chance to look at it, please state any comments you might have. I have a couple myself and I hope you all have a copy, right? Well, I'll just say a couple of things, just very small things. First page, number five, I believe Frank McLean is C.L.A.I.N. I notice on the second page, the Commission is also looking, second paragraph, invasive plant? Is that correct? As opposed to invasive plan action committee? The second page of the minutes, second paragraph, second line down in the second paragraph. Invasive plant, plan?
Plans can be invasive from time to time.
I would assume plants.
Yeah. And one last thing, the last page. The many forms of two. I think there's a T.O. in place of a T.O.O. There should be a T.O.O. That's the fifth line down. Pretty minor, but.
So was your read it?
I did.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I didn't have any comments. I did read it, though. I would make a motion to approve the minutes amended for July twenty-first.
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions?
Steve.
Thank you. So the minutes of July twenty-first are approved. Alright. Have there been any communications received?
Uh, not that I can think of.
No? Alright.
Caught me off guard.
I'm sorry, should've addressed you first. Alright, so in that case, next up would be applications and public hearings. First up, we have a, oh, this is more sensitive. I've noticed, I'm, I can hear my voice reverberating a little bit.
Yeah, I can too.
We were warned that they were a little sensitive. I'm not, I'm not used to hearing that. So we have an application from Plymouth Area Renewable Energy Initiative. Owner, AR Lodge LLC of the plot. PID two oh nine oh two two, three hundred Main Street. Lot size of one thousand three hundred and eight acres in the highway commercial zone. So this is a request of a site plan review to create a new site facility to serve the Plymouth Area Renewable Energy Initiative headquarters at three hundred Main Street. It will include a renovation of approximately sixteen hundred square feet of office space, the construction of an unheated eighteen by thirty-two foot pavilion for the weekly farmer's market pickup and drop-off location. A new driveway will be constructed from Fairgrounds Road. Parking and landscaping will also be reconfigured to accommodate the new facility. And. Is, is there anyone here to represent the applicant? Yes. If you'd like to introduce yourself and come up and say a few words?
I actually prepared some formal remarks for the record, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. I'm Sandra Jones. I know many of you. I'm the co-founder and director of the Plymouth Area Renewable Energy Initiative. Lived in this community since I came to college here in nineteen eighty. I, back in two thousand four, about twenty-five of us from across the community started Paray to bring attention to the overuse of fossil fuels and the harm, the burning of these fuels due to our health and our planet and our pocketbook. That was over eighteen years ago. Fast forward to now. And we have involved thousands of people in the region and throughout the state on meeting the goal of reducing their energy consumption and, and using renewable energy and using energy wisely. We're proud of the work we've done here in Plymouth. We've done work at the municipal level for the Water and Sewer Department, for the school, for the library, and for hundreds of residents in Plymouth. So we're, we're excited that we've continued to grow and be a more integral part of the community. Our motto is reducing our energy use, one person, one building, one home at a time. So we're still absolutely in disbelief that we started this in two thousand four and we still feel needed and wanted. So the application before you is for Paray to make a really big step. We want to move into a long-term home on the, on the corner of Fairgrounds Road and Route Three. Our current building that we were renting from Doug McLean, he, he sold it to Lakes Region Mental Health and so we have a lease right now. They're working with us for a while still, but we need a new home and we're ready to go for something bigger, longer term. Build our local foods pavilion and, and really create an area in the community that will serve as a community resource and, and anchor. So it's a big step for Paray. We started in a, in a free office on one ninety Main Street in the, in the basement. And this is our fourth home now and hopefully moving to Fairgrounds Road and, and Route Three is gonna be a permanent home. We're excited about partnering with Alex Ray. As you know, he's done so much for this town, but he's working with us to renovate a pretty dilapidated part of the brimstone office building. The roof's in really bad shape. There's a kerosene heater or kerosene tank outside the building that needs to go away. There's a lot of work inside, lots of mold and mildew and all kinds of work that needs to be done. So we're excited to kinda pretty up that corner of town, bring a community resource to the area, provide another place for community gatherings and, and we hope all of you are supportive of that idea. I do want to take a second to introduce Trip Anderson. Trip is our newest staff person at the Plymouth Renewable Energy Initiative. He's our first ever Director of Development. Our Board of Directors set out a strategic plan a couple of years ago and in order for us to become a, a longer-term entity here in Plymouth, we knew that we needed to reach out to the community and fundraise and write more grants and communicate and develop more communities. So we're thrilled to have Trip on board who's gonna help us raise the money we need to fulfill this project fully. And I want to introduce Brandon Miller. Brandon lives here in Plymouth. He's been an employee of Paray for six, seven years now. He's the Assistant Manager of our local foods program and also works for the Common Man. So I'm not sure if you'd like me to walk you through any of what you're looking at, but the primary things that we're doing, want to do to the site is put a, a new driveway in on the west side of the building. If you can picture going down Fairgrounds Road, the very end of the brimstone office building is a grass lot right now, but in order for us to use the end of that building, we need a place to pull in and park, cause it's quite a long way away from the corner down to the end of the building there. And beside the building will be building, an eighteen by thirty-two, unheated pavilion will be four-sided. Half of it will be open, half of it will be for storage. It'll be kind of a summer camp cabin sort of look to it. And that will be where the farmers drop off their food on Thursday afternoons and, and consumers pick them up in the afternoon, pick up the goods. We'll also use that front porch for some of our meetings and, and educational workshops and things like that. So pretty much it's, it's adding the pavilion to the site, renovating the office space and then adding the permit, the permitted, the driveway that's already been permitted to the space so we can more easily access the area and have our own entrance in the back. So. So if you have any questions, Trip and I and Brandon are happy to answer them for you.
First of all, thank you very much for the introduction and for all your work.
Okay.
We might have some questions in a moment. I just wanted to like remind everybody the process. So the first thing we do is we decide whether the application's complete and whether or not we accept it.
Okay.
And then after that, if we accept it, then we go through to see if we can approve it or conditionally approve it. And as it's come down from the state level, this process has changed for us a little bit, like just this past month. And we also need to do now a, we need to be a little bit more diligent in stating our process and giving findings of fact, which the Board has talked about previously. And so it's looking a little bit different this time than it has in the past for some of us here.
Okay.
But yeah, so at this point, do we have any questions or do you wanna look over, look it over a little bit more?
Some under.
And at this point, we're really thinking for, I guess for, like if it's complete.
Yeah. So looking just the only waivers that are requested are the. The location of existing waste disposal system. Is that right? And there's one more. Are there other waivers that are on that list that I can't seem to find right now?
The other was Grafton County Soil Survey data.
And the waste, they have, it has town sewer.
Right, and it's in existing structure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Change, no changes are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that makes sense to me with those two waivers, I would say. The application's complete. I'm happy to make a motion, but I feel like.
Second.
Oh, there we go. I made a motion.
How about that? I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
This is Laurel Seashan. I'm not sure, this is the first time we've been to a meeting like this. We are in a butter to the property. Is this the appropriate time for us to ask questions?
Ask questions or is that come later?
We can save that probably for, if, if it is accepted as complete when we get to a public hearing at the approval stage?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter, I see you making some notes. Any, any thoughts on completeness at this point or?
I'm trying to take it all in and, and read quickly as.
Okay.
Catch up. Yep.
So do we need another couple, couple of minutes before a vote then?
We have, I mean, we have the motion and the second, right?
We do. I was just wondering if there's any other comments before we move on from. What's that?
Vote to accept.
Yes. Alright, well, okay. So we have a motion and a second to accept this application as complete. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we have all in favor, one, except for one opposed. So this application is accepted as complete. So now we move on to the process of looking a little more closely and in depth to see whether we would approve of this application and. So. Are there comments from the Board about the approval process?
About the approval process or about?
Or about, about what we see here and not, not the process itself.
I would have a question. Sandra, if you can talk about traffic and anticipated increase in traffic on, on Fairgrounds Road that you're, just let us know how many people you expect to see in and out on, I'm assuming it's mostly gonna be Thursday, Thursdays.
Sure, sure. We have, right now we have a staff of ten that they don't all work at the office. Some of them work in the field. So on a given day, there's usually two to four employees in the office at any, any one time. So we're a small organization that way. We do have a Board of Directors of nine individuals that meet monthly. Oftentimes it's by Zoom. So, but they do meet at our office occasionally. As far as the, the biggest traffic impact would be on Thursday afternoons, we have between fifteen, fifteen and twenty, maybe twenty-five vendors and farmers that come and drop off the goods that have been purchased on localfoodsplymouth.org, which is the online farmer's market. They come between, they're supposed to come between one and three o'clock, but a lot of them start coming at nine AM. So it's quite spread out throughout the day that they drop off their corn and their jams and jellies and all the various things that the community are buying from them. And then from about three fifteen to five forty-five, people come and pick up those orders. So what happens is the farmers drop off all their food. Our staff have the consumers' orders. They pack them all up into a bag, just kinda like what they do at Hanaford. And then when people come, then the cars drive in, they'll stop at the new pavilion, give our staff their name and our volunteers, many, we have a couple of volunteers that help out on LFP pickup day two, will give the, the person in the car their order. So we started curbside pickup when the pandemic happened and we're finding that people love it. It's literally a, a three or four minute process where they drive in, they get their order of local foods from probably fifteen or twenty different vendors in the community and, and off they go. The plan is that they will exit out towards the motel and either go to the right or to the left around the lodge is the plan. So the amount of orders we get can range anywhere from thirty-five to eighty and that would be spread out over that two, two and a half hour time. Some of our, our orders are delivered by one volunteer. So one volunteer might pull up next to the pavilion and they might get three or four orders for people in our community that have a hard time getting around. So, so we make those deliveries available to them.
Thank you.
Did that answer?
Yeah, that was good. Thanks, Steve.
I also had a question about traffic flow, but on, on site. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about like a couple, a couple of questions in fact. One is, so when people come in to pick up, which can be quite a few people. So do they? I mean, I, I was in my own head thinking like, should there be a pull-off there or something as opposed to like parking in the driveway?
We, we feel like we can keep it moving enough because the pavilion is gonna be in the, the back part of the property. So not sure how many cars might fit between the pavilion and the road, but there's usually four, at the most four or five at any one time that are waiting. So we're kinda picturing they're all gonna just remain in line and, and carry on. There is a lot of grassy area, you know, if one needed to move over, cause their order wasn't packed quite right and we forgot their potatoes. But primarily, we just see them moving right through one by one. It's, it's how it works right now in our parking lot on Highland Street. And it's gonna be actually a lot better, cause right now they come in and turn and go back out. So this way it's just gonna be one single file line.
I guess my, I'm, I, thank you. I guess my other question was about the diagonal head-in parking and whether or not in pulling out of that, one would be tempted to use the driveway artifact that's also there? Given, if you're pulling out this way.
Yep.
You might be pointing that way towards the kinda easy route out and right now that's listed as a driveway artifact. Is there a thought about turning that back into a driveway or how to discourage that or? Curious if I have any thoughts about that?
Sure, sure.
It's very, that driveway's very much an artifact. I mean, you barely know that it's there and it does, it just disappears into grass at this point. The, the access road that goes on the south side of the Lodge Hotel, it used to connect there, but there's now a curb there. So you'd have to drive over a curb.
I guess I just wonder, is there a reason not to have ninety-degree parking? I mean, it's kind of a nitpicking question.
It could be ninety-degree parking.
Because if you're gonna be like pulling in and you have to pull out the same, to leave the same way again, it's a, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Good point.
Yeah.
It, it could be ninety-degree. You know, it, space is a little bit tight there.
Okay.
To, to back out. So that's why we put it on a diagonal at this point, but it could certainly be done at a ninety-degree. It just means probably we have to widen that driveway at that point from what it is right now.
I'm, I'm just trying to think like as a driver, like what my thought process would be like, you know, coming through here.
But the. That will be used for staff and board members and maybe some volunteers, but it's not where the LFP people will be picking up.
Precisely. It would not be for LFP and definitely we're envisioning the flow for LFP would be from Fairgrounds Road. Headed northbound to the motel and then through the Common Lodge property. And it works as long as there's a single owner in both, of both properties, which there is now.
So if, if the ownership ever changed, there would need to be an easement or something?
There needs to be a right-of-way and, and you know, that's included in the permit that we have for the curb cut from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. If, if those properties ever have different owners, either that access has to be closed or a right-of-way has to be written into the, both D.
Okay.
We can just, let me just clarify that. So we did double-check with DOT when they got the driveway permit application. There was actually a little bit of a go-around and some phone calls and discussion. We met out there with Alex and Sandra and Joseph and myself. So actually that driveway curb cut used to be there and I think about ten years ago or so it disappeared for some reason. So it's kind of reopening what was there, but DOT wanted to see an easement between the two properties to have that right to go from one to the other. And it was determined that that actually can't happen because it's the same owners of the two lots. And so they own all the rights, so they can't grant themselves rights to use the other property, cause they already own them all. So what DOT did suggest was if one of the parcels is ever conveyed to a different party, at that point, they would be requiring an easement. And I think that would be a wise condition for this Board to add to it also.
John?
Yeah, we agree.
Yes, Mike.
What are the two properties that we're talking about? Where's the property lines?
Right in the middle there, so.
That is the line.
Yep, south of the motel.
It's between the Lodge and the brimstone building.
Yep, this line here.
Around the corner of Fairgrounds and.
Okay. So you're coming from Fairgrounds Road.
Yep.
Coming onto this property.
Yeah, then here's the property line here.
And you're coming across, I thought you were using, utilizing this space.
We are.
So why would you need to go to the other property?
Only for the local foods pickup. So cars can come in here, pick up their package here at the pavilion.
The A is the pavilion.
So that you don't have cars coming and going on Fairgrounds Road.
Oh, I didn't know that there was another road here. You're building that road?
No. I recommend going behind the Lodge there, cause I had never.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They have, they have this little building over there. It's all a bunch of rooms. It's already all paved and.
Back here?
Yeah.
Huh.
That's what it is.
Yeah, you'd never know it unless.
Is it used?
Yep, yep.
It has been repaved from the property line, which is right there, and all of this, including that, is very recently new paved asphalt.
This building's been there for a long time.
Yeah, this part of it is the deteriorating part. And this, you can barely tell there was a driveway here.
And where did this go to? Where did it used to?
Once upon a time, it connected over here.
This is a driveway.
That is a driveway. That's all paved. Very pristine driveway, as a matter of fact.
So when they pull in, they're stopping along the driveway?
Yeah, along the driveway and picking up their food. That, that's the pad.
That's the pavilion that you're building new?
Yes.
And, and you're renovating the existing west wing you're renovating?
Yes.
Yes, there'll be exterior renovation. The roof is in bad shape. There's some water infiltration issues. But it's really the only site work that's being done is ninety-five feet of new. New driveway and the, the pavilion. Here is, here's the, the whole site.
Actually, it's, would it be possible if you were to hold that up or are you trying to pull it up or?
Okay, we just, we just finally got it, so we can put the, and also we have some people on Zoom too, so.
Yeah.
What are the dimensions of the building?
Eighteen by thirty-two.
The new pavilion is eighteen by thirty-two. And that's.
And it's ag zone, correct?
No, highway commercial.
It's commercial. It's historically commercial.
Pardon?
It's historically commercial.
Yes.
This site was developed in nineteen forty-nine by Tobey's and it was a state-of-the-art hotel motel with restaurant and lounge. And it was very popular. And the entire region, the whole area up and down Route Three was heavily developed commercially. Route Three predated Interstate ninety-three as the main route to North Country.
Yeah, and with, this is.
You can see the foundation where more of that motel must have been at one time.
It was a fire. It had to be removed.
Oh, okay.
Do what was left. It, it was a very large motel complex.
So that, that's Route Three. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's up on the screen now.
North.
This is kind of a section of it, but the. I don't know, just, I mean, it's hard to. So this is all pavement here. So you come in off of Fairgrounds Road. This is the existing building here. This is the new pavilion.
And the existing building, is that the site where the Record Enterprise was?
Um, yes, this, I think they were up front here. So there's this long, we, there's offices in here. There's a parking lot here.
Okay.
So the Record, yeah, the front of the brimstone building that we see from the corner is the main part.
Okay, and then the hotel is up here.
Kind of addition that comes back here. They're just gonna use.
Oh, wow.
And there's some offices in there. And there's another entrance here in parking lot that's already existing. Alright, so it's just this little wing in the back that they're gonna renovate. It's all existing. And so it's reopening this curb cut that was disappeared. And this is all pavement now here and you can, and as is this, so this is all pavement. There's another building out back here and the property line's here. So you can currently drive through, yeah. And actually you can drive through and out around here. We did it that day when we were leaving. We followed Alex. He was like, follow me. Joseph can, that was after we bushwhacked around for a while, doing a tour of the lodge. So the idea is that you come in here, pick up the food and then just stack up here and then exit out this way, right, onto this.
You go either way, either side of the lodge.
And this curb cut has an already. And this curb cut has been already been, it has been approved by DOT.
If you go to the back of the packet, there's a whole photographs of the site as well.
Really, the reason why, if the pavilion wasn't on the table here, this probably wouldn't want to be site plan review. So it's the pavilion that we're, we're focusing on, that we're not really worried about how the building's getting reconfigured or anything like that.
Is there a plan for drainage for the new driveway?
Yes.
It's stated in the permit. It's stated in the permit as to how it should be built.
The site is.
In your plan? Oh, your state permit?
The state permit, yep.
With the tie in.
And that is in your packet as well, I believe.
I don't have it.
It states, I have it right here. The driveway shall not exceed twenty feet in width. The entrance of the drive may be flared. And. See. Looking for the part about the drainage.
You might not have copied the driveway permit into the.
Oh, okay. So it says, the right of way line is located at twenty-four feet from and parallel to the center line of the highway. The entrance shall be graded so that the surface of the drive drops two inches at a point four feet from Fairgrounds Road edge of pavement to create a drainage swale. So that is the drainage plan as they've requested. You see, this is ninety-five feet of, is that how much feet?
Yes.
How many feet of driveway?
Basically, from the existing edge of Fairground Road to where the existing driveway is, that section is ninety-five feet.
Great, thank you.
Which is the only, the only new. And the, the high point, you know, occurs right in here. You know, because the, this, what we're calling the west wing used to extend, you know, further out. The foundation is still there. That's the high point. So anything to the south of the west wing drains toward Fairgrounds Road and the existing swale there. Everything to the north basically drains to a spot about where we're in here.
I think the state has a catch basin on the corner of Route Three and Fairgrounds.
Yes. And there are, there are several catch basins that were installed with, you know, the lodge and motel behind. You know, when all that again was put in.
So, John, a question?
Yeah, yes, Mike.
So we're treating this as an accessory structure to the existing structure for the law?
In essence, it would be, yes, yeah.
So, and then it's falling within the size of an accessory structure?
We don't set a limit on the size, I don't believe, in the zoning ordinance. It's just, it's, I mean, the main office is there and the, the use of the pavilion's an accessory to part of their functions, you know. And it's not heated. You don't have water going to it or.
No, we are going to run electricity to it.
Basically, it's a storage shed for most of the time.
The refrigeration part will be inside our main, inside the headquarters, inside the office.
So, so it's mainly seasonal use?
Um, no, we tough it out and run the program through the winter. So it is weekly. We do close probably two weeks around the Christmas time. But it is used on a weekly basis. So that's when the farmers will, will sell all of their stored squash. And, and we were surprised potatoes lasted all the way until I think April or, or May this year. So it's a lot of, a lot of winter crops or, or what they call, what do they call the crops that store over the winter?
Storage crops?
Storage crops. Those are the kind of things that they sell in the wintertime.
So I don't see kind of a walkway that you would walk where and the lighting, whether you would need lighting?
Yep, the, the lighting on the pavilion will be a downlighting in the porch area. If you look at the picture of the pavilion there, Trip will hold that up. So there'll be lighting inside and.
Downlighting in this area. And there's, there'll be downlighting in the little porch area, which is the entry area to the, the, the entry area to the west wing.
So under the roof, kind of the ceiling, on the suit, yeah, built in the ceiling, right?
Nothing of the staff report. The only new lighting will be the downlighting in the porch and the solar powered downlighting on the signs.
Right. There'll be a small sign at the entrance in the back of the building. And then, just like we have now on Highland Street, we'll be using that same sign that's on our building now on the front of the west wing.
And so in terms of, just to kind of like check things off, you know, for our standards. So in terms of landscaping, since you're not really, you're taking an existing structure and set of circumstances, not too much is changing except for removing a few trees, I think it said, scrub oaks or something for the parking?
There'll be, there's some scrub oaks and just some, you know, undergrowth where the parking is being created. It will be removed. There's some beautiful specimen conifers in there. Those will be saved. But other than that and other than some ornamental.
Excuse me, whoever's talking, can you move closer to the microphone? We can't hear, thank you.
Okay. There will be, most of the vegetation is going to stay existing. Certainly, the, there's a line of shrubbery and, and trees along the western boundary between this property and the abutting property. That's not going to be touched. There'll be a little bit of removal of the scrub brush for existing shrubbery on the property line between the two properties that Alex Ray owns, between where the west wing is and the motel building. And there's some ornamental trees adjacent to the west wing that are shading that to the, on the north side that are contributing to some of the mold and mildew that's in the building. So those will be removed and there'll be some foundation planting that, that is put in. Fundamentally, the intent here is that we disturb as little as possible of the site, both the existing vegetation and the existing contouring to, to put in the driveway. The land where the pavilion is going is very flat. And there may, you know, just have to be some minimal leveling of that to put in a concrete platform. But very, very little earthwork is required.
Thank you. Are there further questions and comments from the board before we open the public hearing? All right. It is currently seven oh nine and I will open the public hearing. And if the members of the public have any questions or comments about this application, this would be a good time to speak up.
Hi there, this is Laurel Seashawn. We are abutters to the property. We are on Twenty Fairgrounds Road. And we've actually talked to Alex and some other folks who are working on the project. And we're very excited to see what they're going to do to the property. But we did have some questions that we wanted to pose. The first one was, we just wanted to make sure because our kitchen window looks out to that property and where they're going to build the pavilion is pretty much right outside our kitchen window. And we just wanted to find, we know it's, what, are they going to do anything in the back of the property as far as storage outside of the property that might devalue ours as far as like boxes or whatever? And dumpsters or anything like that?
Nope. No, nothing will be stored outside of the pavilion during the day when, or the afternoon when the, when the pickup is going on. You know, there might be coolers and crates and stuff outside as the, as the food is being taken in and packed. But that'll all be put back into the pavilion at, at around five forty-five, six o'clock on Thursday nights. So we'll keep it nice and clean.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that was our question too, because there, there are, there's, as you might know, there's a seventy-five acre parcel right behind both the Connaught Lodge right now and our properties extending along behind the properties on Fairgrounds. There's two known bear dens and we actually had a bear in our yard just the other day. And we just wanted to make sure there was no issues with bear control or the actual dumpsters. Are the dumpsters for the property going to be enclosed? We're not going to be like, you know, having those bears come more on our property?
Yeah, we, we are not installing any dumpsters. So all of our trash will be kept inside till we bring it to the recycling center.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you so much. That was our only question.
Thank you.
So Brandon Miller, our assistant manager, is here. And he just wanted to remind you that all food comes on Thursday and leaves on Thursday. So there won't be any food stored in that pavilion. That's how the program works.
Thank you. Yes, Frank?
Yes. I'm Frank Miller and I stand in support of this well-thought-out use of an existing structure. And I think it'd be a very big plus to the Plymouth community. And I think it needs to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Questions? Okay. Are there further comments or questions from the board?
I feel that this proposal is in the spirit of our community. And I, I'm going to support it.
I also think it's certainly a better location as far as traffic and impact than the current site too. So I think overall an improvement.
Yeah.
Except for those of us who can no longer walk there.
I think it's a good use of the property and I support the, this program.
I was going to remind the board, if, if anyone's considering a motion, that we should be doing findings of fact before moving on.
I'm supporting the proposal.
I think it would be, I mean, I, I understand we need to do that, but I don't totally really know what that looks like, so.
I mean, I, I think the whole state is saying that to themselves right now, I think. And I, I think once we adopt new site plan review regulations, it might be nice to have a checklist that we can go through of the things that we're looking for and saying, yes, 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 yes. And I, I started to do that actually earlier this week. And I said, wait a second, we're, we're, we're reworking these right now anyway. So I'm not going to do it now.
No. Is there some sort of circular issue here where it's like you have to find, you have to present the findings of fact in the notice of decision? So we have to be talking about this?
So the, I think we're still trying to sort this out. We went, and technically it doesn't go into effect till the twenty-third, right? I think it is.
That's true.
So we're just practicing tonight.
We're practicing, okay.
Porray is like the guinea pig on this one. But, so findings of, the zoning board has had to do this for a while. So basically you think of the facts, like you would state, so before you make a motion, before you close the hearing and discuss approving it, you'd want to run through facts that the application, you know, was, was accepted with two waivers. That's a fact. It's zoned highway commercial. It's, the proposed use is, you know.
Permitted.
Permitted and acceptable to the site, you know, fits the size of the site, you know. The traffic has been accommodated, you know, they have a driveway permit. Those are all, et cetera, et cetera. They're, the landscaping will largely remain the same with just some cleaning up to build, you know, and remove around the building for to collect mold or what, correct the mold, not collect mold. You know, that kind of, those are, so you make those kinds of statements that support your final decision. You know, or you could say that it doesn't have this or that, or these things weren't addressed. Or it doesn't meet the standards that the site plan review.
Especially, I was just looking at like the general standards, design and development, landscaping.
Yeah.
Parking loading areas. And these are things we've talked about.
Yeah, so you would want to state that, you know, in review of the regulations, that the use as proposed meets those sections. And I think especially when it's, when it, when you're comfortable with the way it's laid out, it's, I wouldn't worry about it as much. It's really more if you're going to deny an application, you have to be much more, you know, you want to have specificity. So then those, then you can say you're denying it because it didn't meet the standards for lighting or, you know, that kind of thing.
Which we do anyway, but we're making it a little bit more formal.
Yeah. You're supposed to put those in the notice of decision anyway. So it's sort of like, but you can't just say, I'm denying it because I don't like it. And you shouldn't just say, I, I'm approving it because I like it and it fits the commute, you know, it.
Although frankly, we couldn't do that, we couldn't do that a year ago either, really.
Right, in essence, but I guess some town out there was doing that.
So basically, before we close the public hearing, we need to say, okay, let's discuss the facts. So, or let's add some finding or.
Yeah, I mean, I think you shouldn't close the hearing and allow all board members to talk. And then, and then, because then you're discussing, you've, you've gotten comments. One of the facts is you had an abutter, you know, raise some questions and they were addressed and whatever type. You had another person speak in support of it, you know, so. I mean, a fact could be you had abutters that were against it and for these reasons, you know, that brought out new information. So we can't write those for you because it's like, it's supposed to be based on the things you find out here at the meeting. So, sorry to go through the lesson without.
That's okay.
All right, so it is currently seven seventeen and I am closing the public hearing. So we should probably say a few words about the facts at this point. So we have standards for landscaping and in this case, most of the landscaping is going to remain intact. And most of the site is going to remain intact. But I think that has been fulfilled. Parking and loading areas, we have discussed and it doesn't, we had a few concerns and I think they've been answered acceptably. Sidewalks, I don't think is, it's mostly an existing site and I don't think there's much to address there. Does anybody else want to pop in?
I was going to say, I mean, it is in the highway commercials zone.
Yes.
And fits within the existing zone. It's a permitted use in our zoning ordinance and fits within the zoning ordinance regulations as far as dimensions go. Is this helpful? Is this, okay. I'm doing it one way for a long time. It's, it's hard to wrap my head around this.
We've heard from abutters and they have spoken, they've asked them questions and they were answered. And there were no objections to this plan?
The soils and the drainage are, are adequate for the purposes intended.
There's an existing DOT permit that also handles stormwater of the driveway itself?
The drive across the lot lines has been addressed, that if the land ever changes hands, there will be an easement.
We have to put that in as a condition.
Well, we can put that in as a condition. It seems to be in there partially already, but we can definitely reiterate that. I mean, in the driveway permit, it's, it's already partially stated. I mean, I, I mean, one of the things they did say from the state was, what, what June was saying a moment ago, if it looks like a fairly straightforward application, you don't need to go overly effusive in your.
So in your opinion, June, right now, as far as you know, is this a sufficient list?
Well, the law hasn't taken effect, so it's great, it's a great list.
In our, in our practice attempt, I think mine's a bit bad.
I think it's fine, yeah.
I think the motion that we accept and with the condition of allowing for the opportunity, if one of the lots were to change hands, that they do a right of way for the driveway so the business can continue.
Second.
Can I just suggest, you've been approve, not accept, right?
Oh, approve, yes.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Abstained?
Abstained. Abstained.
Abstained, oh, sorry, abstained?
Aye.
So the, this site plan from Paray has been approved, with the, with conditionally approved, as noted. Thank you, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you for all your work.
Something I guess the zoning board, when they go through their findings, they do vote.
Yes.
So I guess if there were particularly an approval or denial based upon a finding, they may want to pass it forward.
Where they have separate votes on individual findings? Yeah, okay.
Or no, I think you could do an overall, sometimes they're a little tedious about it, but you could, yeah, you could say, you list the facts and then just say, you know, or at least one through five, or they, we often have to read them back, so there's a lot of.
Thank you.
Kind of giving us a second, that's where it'll slow down the meeting.
What's his name?
And the boards are.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, we have a revocation of a minor lot line adjustment between PID 220002 and PID 220003, 129 Danny Lobster Highway from George's Realty LLC and its agent Ekman Engineering, David Ekman. This lot adjustment was conditionally approved on August 19th, 2022, but the conditions have not been met. No public hearing required for subdivision regulations. And we did discuss this issue at our last meeting. So our goal here is to make our discussion at our last meeting more official. And so the question would be, do we have the pieces in place for a revocation of this minor lot line adjustment? And so have they met their requirements for it to have gone into effect? I don't know if staff wants to say anything before we discuss.
Go to short, this goes back to basically a year ago, almost to the day, August 19th. And this has been kind of sitting there on my desk for a while. I did a couple times reached out to the engineer that, you know, it was like, you haven't finished this, get us the Mylar. Should we get it recorded, whatever? And then the property did sell, actually very shortly after approval, it was in, I think, September 1st at the registry. I've looked at the deed, there was no mention of the lot line adjustment, and there's no plan because it was never finished and recorded. So, you know, the new owner was, accepted a deed with the original configuration of the property. And the deed descriptions match what the George's Realty had. So the applicant's no longer the applicant even in this case. It's a very bizarre sort of situation. So I reached out to the engineer, like, what do you want to do here? Does the new owner want this? And they were like, we don't know, we'll get back to you. And they never did. And I did send them this a week or so ago and got a phone call from the engineering company saying, no, we still want to do this. And I was like, well, you didn't convey that before, the property's been conveyed. You, if you want to do this, if the new owner want, bought this with this configuration, they didn't, they accepted a deed that says something different, so you're back to square one. If the new owner wants this lot line adjustment, it would be a new application. They could bring the plan in, and it's done, and we'll re-approve it. And it raises a question of whether they have to go through application fees. And I was like, well, the planning, you know, we don't set the fees, the select board does, it's by application, so we'll bring in a new applicant. It's a whole different applicant, because it's a different owner. It's kind of strange to not have it.
So in addition to the property changing hands with the old configuration, they haven't met the timeline.
Exactly, and that too, yeah.
They haven't submitted a plat, and so.
Well, the property changed hands less than two weeks after they were here.
I know, it was all very, yeah. And they were here, they were physically present in the meeting and heard the condition of approval. We sent the notice of decision, it's not like they didn't know. So whatever happened, I can't explain it, but it happened, and so a year's run out. We found this, you know, this is in the subdivision regulations, what you have there in front of you, that, you know, you got a year to basically finish it up, they're at that mark, so you don't have, because it's administrative, don't need to have a hearing. So we didn't bother to have that expense of notifying all the butters and that kind of stuff. Because we don't have any fees to do that either. So my recommendation is that you make a motion to revoke approval of this plan, based on the fact that everything we just said.
We need to do findings of facts for revocations?
We kind of did that anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
They haven't met the, fact, they haven't met the timeline. Fact, they never submitted a finalized Mylar. And fact, it's in, under new ownership at this point, from the original application that was approved. And the new ownership, when it changed hands, was on the previous configuration.
Great, well done.
So I would have a comment to say, it was probably, George's Realty wasn't used to doing, going through the process of this possibly, and didn't know what the requirements were after he got his approval.
The applicant.
Was the engineer the applicant?
Whoops, there was the applicant's agent.
Yeah, the, this is of course our old form, but.
He's the applicant.
The applicant designated Ekman Engineering, David Ekman, as their agent. And they sign, they sign the application form on doing that. So in that, in essence, they turned it over to a licensed land surveying and a firm that knows the rules, I mean.
I mean, the guy that came here that night was, I thought, the real estate person.
No, he was David Ekman that was here, as I recall.
And you have reached out at this point.
Yeah, and we sent the notice of decision, you know?
He's got his money, so I wonder whether, I hate to, I'd like to hear them come here and say what the story is so before we make a decision. That's my feeling.
I guess it sounds to me like the staff have done due diligence, reaching out to the designated agent, that, I mean, that's the person that you have to reach out to, that's, the owner has authorized the agent to speak on behalf of that. That's the person on record.
I mean, they signed saying, I hereby, the owner, signed saying, I hereby designate Ekman Engineering as a representative to whom all communication with the owners may be addressed, and the person whom legal process may be served in connection with any proceedings, you know, blah, 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 so.
Is the approval one year to the day? Because tomorrow being the 19th, if we decline it today, or, I mean, a day can make a big difference if someone wants to make a stink.
Well, you can make it, I think you could revoke it conditional, that they get, you know, effective on, in two days or something. But again, it's not even, even if they brought it in now, it's no longer the same owner. So like, the parties and, the parties involved, like Ekman Engineering doesn't represent the owner anymore.
The new owner.
Right. That's, that's the other part, that it really, you know, I think we probably could have done this last September 2nd, to be honest.
So really, if this person were to come to you tomorrow, it would be starting over again? Or came to you three months ago, it would still be starting over?
That would be my interpretation of it, you know? I did not waste the town's resources in checking with John Ratigan, our counsel on it, but, you know, somebody can appeal that decision on my, that I make, I'm not, I think it's pretty clear, like, they're not the party anymore. They don't own the, you know, if they come forward with this, it's not, they don't own it anymore.
Mike?
I'm not an attorney, but I would love to hear, I would love to hear the owner now, what their story is before I make a decision tonight.
But wouldn't the new owner have to go through the process?
I'm not sure, it's the same lot, nothing's changed, the regulations haven't changed, everything's the same. It's just a matter of recording the plot that the town approved, it's the same approval.
Unless that same owner files an extension with 24 hours, why do we need to take any action? It's going to expire.
Well, the, I, for the official file, it's nice to have a vote from the board to say that. You know, I wanted the board to make that decision, you know?
I see.
And this is sort of a administrative issue on your end, so we're tying up a loose end, it's just.
Exactly, so we can put a note in the file that on this date, you voted to revoke it, effective August 20th or something, you know?
And the, the danger is, or the concern is that if they were to go and just put up a second building on the second lot, it's actually, there is no second lot because it hasn't been recorded. So having a paper trail that demonstrates that is important.
Well, there, it's a lot line adjustment, so there are two lots.
Oh, there are two lots, yeah, yeah.
There's two lots conveyed, but it could impact the setbacks, that kind of thing.
So had.
There's no, they could put up something thinking, you know, it's, we don't know, the lot line is still where it previously was, so.
So all, if it had been recorded within the two weeks of selling, this would be a moot point, it'd be done, it'd be a done deal.
Right.
So it was just the omission of getting it recorded, and it sounds like, and I'm not an attorney, it sounds like it still could be recorded. And I'm not an attorney, none of us are here, Neil is, but.
No, I don't practice law.
But I would say I would love to hear from the owner of record, and maybe they'll reach counsel and come back with some answers for us. But we're a day early anyway, there's nothing, I don't think there's much we can do today.
Have you seen the deed? It doesn't refer to the lot line adjustment.
Pardon?
The new deed to the new owners doesn't refer to the lot line adjustment. Yeah, so I just, I don't know how you could record it now because the person that just bought that did not buy it with a lot line adjustment in their deed.
Right.
So if you went and recorded it now.
And their deed's wrong.
Doesn't make sense.
The deed would have to be updated.
If that's what the new owner wants.
Right, and they're the only person that can make that choice, if they're the owner.
But if they want that, then they need to do a new application because they're not, yeah, so.
Good questions.
I mean, we have, it's in our site, our subdivision regs, that they have a year, I mean.
And you gave the approval on August 19th, 2021, and today's the 18th, so I've, in essence, I feel like you've given, this is the 365th day.
We could, we could wait like four and a half hours until the, until. I mean, you have to end the meeting at 10:30, but you know.
They're not going to bring in, you know, even if they brought it in tomorrow, like at nine o'clock, I'd still be like, or five o'clock, I'd still be like, it's, you're not the owner, you know?
Right, I understand.
So. And then the clock's over, you know what I mean? So it's sort of a, that's what, I'm following what the regulations say, basically, so.
Well, keeping with that thought, what does the regulations state, or what did they state at the time? Is either the towns, or the boards, or the town solicitors' responsibility to the applicant, should they essentially do nothing for that year? Do we have a course of action? Are we responsible to do something?
So the, I had in the staff report from the subdivision regulations under section E of the subdivision regulations, conditional approval, the board may grant conditional approval, which you did. Because there was a condition of change, they also had to make a change on the plan to add a note about the frontage, all right, which they didn't. So they, they needed to correct the Mylar, finish the, make that note, and bring us the Mylar to be signed and sent to the registry. All right, they never did that. So in essence, the condition was never met. They did get subdivision approval from DES, and then the frontage was supposed to, so that one last bit of the frontage needed to be shown. Because it wasn't labeled the frontage, and it's a very strange layout, so it was hard to read, so we wanted it clearly noted on the plan, all right? The plat will not be recorded, signed or recorded until all the conditions have been met. The applicant, if the applicant has not complied with the conditions of approval within one year, the approval shall be considered null and void. A further public hearing to determine compliance is not required when such conditions are, one, administrative in nature, which is administrative, so you don't have to have a hearing, but it's, you know, I think it's just for clarity, would be good to have the board signify that, otherwise, we've got to, you know, refer to this section in the, you know.
I might have a middle ground. I would like to see him possibly have 90 days to correct it. If, if he doesn't go through with it, then we can nullify it at that point.
What does corrected mean precisely in terms of changing?
Get a hold of, get a hold of the prior owner and see if their counsel says, yeah, we can correct this, this is what we do.
I did that, like, I've done that, like, I've reached out to Ekman Engineering five, five times and said.
The owner, the owner said they would like it to keep that intact, the subdivision.
Perhaps the new owner, but I have not, I have not communicated directly with them, they are not a party to this. The parties are the previous owner and their engineering firm who I've communicated with because that's who they designated as the person to deal with.
And when the new owner bought it.
They said they were going to go back to the old owner and the new owner and try to figure it out, and they never did, so. And what are we supposed to do? I can't, we can't just keep letting this sit there. We've got the assessing office, like, what do we do? Is this going to need to be corrected or not for the tax maps and assessing? I'm like, no, it needs to be revoked, the timelines run out. Even if it was, you know, and, and the, the current owner isn't the part, they, these people are really no longer a party to this transaction. They don't own the parcel anymore, which makes it like even more weird, so.
And the current owner bought the property noted with the old configuration.
Right.
The old lot line.
Do we know that for sure?
Yes, I checked the deeds, I checked the deeds.
Right, the deed, but do we not know that the seller showed them the approval, conditional approval by the town?
That is, I think that has nothing to do with us.
We have not, we have no knowledge of that, we are not a party to that.
That's between them, that's where we're.
The regal description is at the registry of deeds for all of our, you know, any parcel and land. It's at the registry, it's the same as it was, this is not part of it, so.
I mean, I think the, oh, sorry.
It's okay. Have you asked the town attorney?
No, I have not, I did not feel like it was worth however much money, you know?
Oh, okay.
Per hour. I would be a hundred dollar phone call, was that worth it? It seems really clear to me, I don't know, it says what it says in the subdivision regulations.
I think it's clear to me, too, we don't need to take any action.
Yeah.
Well, just where it's already changed hands, and it is what it is on that paper, we're out. We were out.
We are out. Even if we took action, who do we notify? The old owner, the new owner?
We put in the minutes, and we put a note in the file, because again, it's, you know.
And it sits.
This is, this is sort of wrapping up the paper trail and taking it out of Judy Joseph's inbox, so that it is closed and done.
Otherwise, 20 years from now, somebody's going to open up this file and see this application, because by law, we have to keep everything. We can't just go, I can't just go shred this or throw it out. We have to stick it in the files downstairs, everything's org, pretty, supposed to be organized by mat and lot number. So 10 years from now, somebody opens up the file and sees a lot line adjustment, and it sees it was approved. There's nothing in the file that says it was not approved right now. And I would prefer that it's a board, you know, we don't, we don't grant approvals or disapprovals, we as staff. The planning board does that, that's why I brought it to the board. It would be much nicer to be able to say, the board, and have a set of minutes on this date, you voted and revoke the plan, and we can stick it in the file, and there's clarity about the history of what happened, that's all we're asking.
But it does expire anyway, it does expire tomorrow.
Yeah, but it's, it's easier to, again, have it recognize that the board recognized that it was expired, and the board, you know, formally revoked it, so it's just done, so.
What you're saying is that this is a conditional failure.
Yeah, it's administrative failure.
That's all we're saying.
And the one year technically ends tonight.
Yeah, when we're saving 10 years from now, somebody to be like, okay, there's an approval, then they have to go look up the deed.
Yeah, and they try, they see the map, and they look at the proper, the tax maps, why is the tax map different? And then they could hand that to the, to somebody, you know, and it could get really messy with our maps different and the, you know.
Makes sense to me.
So in short, it'll expire anyway, but it's, it's nice to have the closure officially to kind of double dot the T and say, we're, it's done. If anybody ever looks back at it. So there is not officially going to be
Sorry.
a public hearing on this revocation. And I think we can probably handle this among the board. Referring to a hint. So, does anybody want to?
I would like.
I would like to make this decision either in our next meeting or next month. There's no harm in waiting, we're premature by doing it today anyway. No one wants to stay here for another four and a half hours.
Well, business hours are done, so they really can't submit anything at this point. Well, business hours are done, so they really can't submit anything at this point anyway.
Right, so let's, let's hear their story, next meeting, get ahold of them, see if they want to show up. If they don't, then it becomes a very easy choice for me anyway.
I would worry about, I'm not worried, but I just, I mean, I recognize that June and Joseph have a lot going on, and for them to go beyond what I think is already due diligence is just a waste of, waste of time, so.
Even if they come, Mike, and say they still want, I don't know who "they" is. The current owner's not a party, if they still want it, they can submit a new application and do that.
We're not attorneys.
Old owner wants it, they're not a party to it anymore. This Ekman Engineering isn't even a party to it, they do not, Georgia's Realty doesn't own the property anymore, so I don't know who "they" is.
Correct, none of us do, none of us are attorneys that are practicing.
I'm not gonna reach out to, like, noticing a bunch of people, I'm just, because even if the current, if the current owner wants this configuration, they're welcome to submit a new application, and this board will probably be happy to approve it, you've seen it before. That's all that has to happen, it has to start over. So there's no "they" that comes here, who would it be? They're not a party to it.
We don't know, and we're not attorneys, and we, we haven't heard from our, our town attorney, and I think that it's very little work to wait and see what they have to say, and they may have more information than what we have now.
So I've been hearing some mixed thoughts on the board, and I'm curious if anyone on the board would either like to wait longer or like to make a motion at this point?
I guess I don't, I mean, I would say I would make a motion, but it seems like if we want to wait till the next public hearing in September, I mean, you know, it's just gonna, it's gonna sit until then, but I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
I would second that.
I didn't, that wasn't a motion, that was just a suggestion.
With, with the understanding that there's not going to be a public hearing and notification of, who, we don't even know who that would be at this point?
I mean, it could go to our September 1st meeting too, you know, that'd be fine.
I, I think that the sale of the property and the failure of the new owner or Ekman Engineering to respond to the planning board, town planner, is an indication that they have failed to fulfill their conditional approval.
Say that again, Neil?
Yeah.
The, the fact that the property has been sold, and we have not had any communication from the new owner-
We did though.
Or from, we did?
I thought you said you did, they, they wanted to keep it.
Ekman Engineering was thought they might, but I'm like, but absolutely, they're not even your client, they don't know, it's not even their client, you understand?
Yes, I thought you said you had talked to the new owner.
No, I have not talked to the new owner.
So no one's talked to the new owner?
No.
We're getting into private contract relationships, and the, the approval has failed, and, and they have not come forward.
Nor demonstrated intent or interest to do so?
Yeah.
Yep, that's that, Neil.
So I would suggest we either make a motion and close this out tonight, or wait till our September 1st meeting if we want to not jump the gun by three hours and, or, sorry, four hours and-
Well, at this point, the close of business is over anyway.
No, I, I'm, I'm right there with you, but-
Although we could make it conditional upon not receiving something by tomorrow morning, if we did want to make a motion, if anyone wanted to do that.
I would make a motion that we revoke this application.
You would, or you-
I will, I, I am gonna make a motion. Because I'd like to go home at some point tonight.
Not that tea.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we revoke this application, this approval as of 9:00 AM on Friday, August 19th.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just have a small statement, I guess. I guess I look at it from the buyer's perspective. We don't know what they were buying, we don't know what they were promised. Yeah, it's a contractual agreement that they might have had about it, and it might entail going to lawyers and trying to iron this out. We don't know what that process might be, none of us know that. But I would love to at least leave out a little bit of a chance that the new buyer, again, maybe spent more money on this approval knowing it was approved just two weeks prior, I'm sure they must have heard something, that I would hate to lose all, any chance of being able to resurrect what they have, rather than going through the process and the cost to re-notify the abutters when it was already approved with very little if no abutters objecting to it back in 2021. We did have a tough situation with what was going on a year ago, and I would love to at least offer 30 days to try and let the new buyer try and iron it out, rather than going back through the whole process again. And if we can give them 30 days, that's kind of a, that's kind of nice from the board to be able to offer that. And maybe they can't do anything, and then it makes our job easier, but at least it's one of our own people here in, in, in the town, and let's at least afford them 30 days.
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say that this new owner is welcome to come in and put in a new application and, and pursue the, the approval process. If, if we don't act on this, it could result in a very expensive legal dispute down the road.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to revoke the lot line adjustment from Ekman Engineering, PID 220002 and 22003, as of tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Okay, the lot line revocation is approved. Thank you, everyone. So, coming up next, are there any from the staff informational or pre-application reviews to report on?
I lost my agenda, I don't think so.
Nope, unless there's anybody in the, in, on Zoom who wants to do a pre-application review, I don't see anyone on Zoom. I don't think so.
Be surprising.
And this is how our meetings go later than expected sometimes. So is that a negative, June, it's from you as well?
Okay. Okay, other business from members of the board and planning staff. So over the last several meetings, we've been looking at our site plan review regulations, and we have received in our packet of last Friday, a, an updated copy of our proposed new regulations, and I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at those, but I'm curious if anyone has any comments. I took a look at them, and they looked good to me, after many, many edits at our last meeting. I don't really have any further comments on them, unless anyone else does.
You guys did-
Yes?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd say you guys did a lot of fine tuning edits this time around, I mean, you guys did a lot.
Mike?
So I am looking over and reflecting back on the last several meetings, and I've mentioned this before, that I think it's always important to, not just for this board, because very few of us have sat on that side of the room with proposals as an applicant. Peter has, or as a, representing an applicant. Some of us have done some minor things, but there's a lot that goes into our regulations, our rules, and we've had some amazing planners over the past 10, 14 years that I've been involved with the planning board. And we're doing a lot of changes right now, and I'm not sure where the changes originated from, whether it was the board saying, yeah, we need to make a lot of changes here, when we're really not the ones that know. So I would like to see, before we get too much further ahead, I would love to see some of the faces that we do see on a regular basis, some of the applicants that have come forward and maybe coming forward and again, and saying, and they may say, these are some really great changes you guys are proposing, and they may say, you know, dealing with this on a regular basis, there's some things here that I would be worried about, we don't know what they're gonna say. And I'm willing to, all of us, I would think, would be willing to listen, maybe put the brakes on for a little bit, and see what they have to say, in a, in some sort of setting, and-
So, Mike, so first of all, in approving these regulations, which will not happen tonight, we will be having a public hearing, and we will be asking the public to come in if they have thoughts about these proposed regulations and give us feedback.
So, and I, I realize that, and I always think it's better to, and I've said this many times, it's always better to bring people in at the beginning of the process, find out what's wrong, and see what we can do to make it better if, if that is the case. Rather than at the end of the process, it kind of feels like they're, they're coming in at the 12th hour. And so that's my suggestion, let's get the input and not put the cart before the horse.
Well, if we get input that says, like, this is a disaster, we can postpone this. We don't have to say yes to everything we did that night despite negative input. So it, it seems to me as though we should get that input, and at the public hearing, and if that input leads us to say, no, we can't approve these, then we don't approve them, and we go back to the drawing board and take into consideration that input. But that input is part of the process, and it will be heard, and-
What's, what's the big reason that we need to make these changes?
Well, I think we've heard from staff several times that there are questions that come up in the process, often before it even gets to the board, about some ambiguities in some of our language, and other things that often need to be answered in clarification of our regulations. So I think some of these changes, if I'm reading the staff correctly, have to do with questions that come up fairly often about ways in which our current regulations are ambiguous, and sometimes even a little bit contradictory. And the other part is, I, I think most of what we're doing here, that's not directly addressing some of those questions, the goal is not to make it harder for applicants, but to allow them to better understand what our goals are when they put forth an application. So we're being more clear in our expectations, because sometimes vague can be freeing, but sometimes vague can be kind of scary, because like, I don't really know what you want. And we're being a little bit more clear now in saying, this is what we want, not to be restrictive and, like, knock everything out of the water, but just so everybody's expectations are clear.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yeah.
As well as far as the need for this, so our site plan regs are from, what, 2007, 2004, something like that, they're old. They don't even mention stormwater, which is one of the biggest threats to, or one of the biggest things we're gonna see under climate change conditions, we're already seeing that. There's, there's no mention of stormwater in our current site plan regs. We, it was more of a subdivision regs, but it carries over to the sub, site plan review. The town attorney suggested we add specific language about wetlands and natural resources because of a court case that we were brought into because of a planning board decision. So there, you know, there's a couple of needs right there. Our job as planners is to plan and not just to sit here and go through applications. We need to make sure that we're providing the best structure for, for our town. And the other piece is the master plan, we updated our master plan five years ago, four years ago. There are a number of recommendations in the master plan, and, you know, there is a, you know, a great reason to update our site plan regs because we did get feedback through multiple different venues in the master plan, so.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, just real quick, well said, I think both of you, and also June and Joseph, I, I think you've done a great job. I, I'm kind of sort of the Simon Cowell in this, because I have sat on both sides, not just in this town, many, many other towns in many states, but I, I think this is basically progress, in one word, progress. And they're both dead right for engineers trying to prepare applications with communities that have, we'll say, skimpy regulations. It is difficult, we have to guess, or we have to use similes, or we have to look for other regulations and try to apply that structure to a project. So this provides a much better structure. I actually, as an engineer, think it's still way too thin, but, but I understand you want to keep things, you know, rule Plymouth, and, and probably so does most everybody else. I would like to see a Bible this thick, because I'm an engineer. I, I want to be told every little nook and cranny. So this will never do that, but it is progress, and I think it's a, I think it's a value-added document to both the board, to, to landowners, to developers, to engineers, to scientists, to attorneys, to anybody that would have use of this document in the future.
I think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Susan, I'm sorry, I'm not the one who gets to say that.
We personally are working on a couple of subdivisions in other towns, and so we're struggling going through some of the stuff. One town is very clear, and the other town is not so clear. And it's, it's really, really important in just the planning of the subdivision, how to lay it out, how to do all of that, and how to know what the town wants and have it be very clear. So I think it is progress, it's a start, we're, we're just, we're muddling through it, and times change, and so I think it's time to make changes to make it better and easier for the people that are on that side trying to get it done.
So-
Yes, Mike?
So I, I appreciate the feedback from two on the board that are on that side, and and it probably is very good to be more specific with our regulations, and I, I think I would possibly have no problem agreeing with Peter that it's progress. I don't know, I'm not an expert at this, I would love to have more feedback. I think more feedback better, especially early on in the process, and it may confirm what we're doing, it's just, sometimes I, I feel like we're spending a lot of time and creating just different ambiguities potentially, I just don't know. Sometimes, anyway, I appreciate this, and I would love to see more of that early on in the process, not in the end, that's all I'm saying.
And I will also just add, if you read through these, and you think we're introducing specific ambiguities that were not there before, I think we'd love to hear about that. I mean, we've had some big discussions, talking about very kind of fine tooth, like, going through all the wording here, and seeing where we've clarified things, and if we miss something where we reintroduced ambiguity, I mean, we definitely love to hear that.
And it's, I, go ahead, John.
June, could you please explain, like, where we are now in terms of these regulations, and where do you, what are our next steps? What do you think the timeline will be?
So, this was a pretty substantial rewrite of the document and rearranging of things because I'm always flipping through, like, our current regulations, and just the administrative stuff, it's kind of all over the place, there's just some organizational things. So we tried to put the purpose and sort of the administrative stuff right up front to make it, we talked about that earlier, kind of rearranging it. We've been talking about this for, what, four months, five months, you know, actually, the details of this, and some debated how far to go with keeping the engineers happy with pages and pages and pages versus the town of, you know, having something that fits Plymouth. And we backed off on, like, some landscaping and some building design things that, you know, we had presented earlier to kind of get the temperature where we wanted. We've put a lot of time into this, and the board's already discussed this five, six meetings in various shapes and forms. So this isn't a new thing, it's been on the agenda, and the process is, you have to go through that to develop something to then have the hearing on. You know, so that's where- You know, so that's where we're at. We, um, you know, have made, I think all, and the other thing is there's been quite a few changes in statutes that not just this last legislative session, but in other times that we had to update a few things there. And Joseph did a lot of research on that, um, and provided a lot of, a lot of research throughout the whole thing. The biggest area where we've added things, really the submission part is all the same for the most part with a couple of clarity about elevation above sea level to help John out.
Well, like three different types of elevations.
Yeah, but you know, just that's all there because you need those details. It's the design guidelines where we're trying to give more clarity and breaking it down, roads and traffic. Just what are we looking for? How do you have people get those things together? So now that this is packaged together, it's ready to show it to the public and have the public hearing, which we would be noticing, we're going to send the ad to the paper if the thought was tomorrow for a public hearing on the 15th, because we have statutory requirements for how many days we have to get the notice. It's 10 days prior. We've calculated that out. So we'll put it up on the website. There's a draft then for people to review and they are welcome to come on the 15th to have the public hearing, which is dictated by statute. But until then, there's nothing to really, it's hard to gain a lot of input because we don't know what, without having something to comment on. I mean, the input the board gave at the last meeting, kind of line by line, paragraph by paragraph was fantastic. It really, we holed up for a couple of, one afternoon over in the library and really went through it all and tried to make those, make those change, incorporate those changes and, and hopefully delivered that to you. So.
And you've had the current, uh, town engineer add comments as well?
Mike Fignelli has mainly looked at just the stormwater design guidelines. We wrote up something and he reviewed it and provided some good comments. We paid him for that. He charged us, which was fair. And then, um, we actually had a pre-construction meeting today for the Lakes Region Mental Health. We chatted with him. We're going to send him this latest copy of it. And so he's reviewed it. Um, we want, also wanted him to sit down, see the whole thing. And we have not had the town's attorney review it yet.
Oh, and just.
Because again, there, we wanted to wait till it was kind of, if you guys adopted this or were ready, felt that once we make all, you know, accept all these changes that we've proposed and double check again, just the editorial stuff, then we would send it to the attorney to have his review to make sure we're doing it, you know? But I'm confident we are. It's not a major rewrite on that.
How many public hearings do we have to have?
We have to have one.
Just one.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify also like the notion of satisfying the kind of, the engineers with lots and lots of detail. And there's a balance to be had there because not every applicant's an engineer. And we have some smaller applicants who are not coming in with engineers who also have to be able to read it.
I think also we.
And so, so to, to have it be clear for them and precise, but at the same time satisfying, you know, the engineers who will be going before us as well as the smaller applicants and have it still readable for them. And I think we've found a pretty good, um, well.
The, the other area I would.
I found a pretty good medium there.
And I would say the other area where really Joseph put in a lot of work on trying to rewrite a section about, um, compliance and sort of post, we changed it to post approval procedures. So once you give a conditional approval, how many months or years do you have? It's 12 months, if I can remember all this. It's 12 months to meet the conditions. And then you've got a timeline to make active and substantial development, defining what that is, is in here now. The board can define something different. There's statement here. We've always struggled with that. And we sit there and have a conditionally approved, um, site plan. And the developer wants to start removing stumps and get going. And we don't have any surety. We don't have any construction inspection money. They haven't met the conditions of approval. They cannot start that yet. So there's reasons to, and all, our job is, we work for the town. You guys work, represent the town. So it's protect the resources and the community and make sure things are built in accordance with what you approve and that we help facilitate that. So this gives clear, much more clear expectations, I believe, on being able to say on section whatever, 1A, it says this. So this is why you're being required to do this. And I think that you would.
It's been a consensual process for several months at this point, talking about this and making, Rebecca.
I just want to remind everyone too, that we have had the advice and counsel of somebody with decades in the planning field to help us through this process. Who's, who's probably looked at hundreds of town site plan regulations, um, within the state and I'm sure beyond. And I mean, that's June. She's, she is a, an expert in this field. That's why she sits at this table with us. So, um, I think that's important to remember.
I'd like to say something.
Yes, Neil.
Having come from a family of, that's been long engaged in agriculture, I understand your concerns, Mike. But as a wetland scientist and a stormwater professional, I, I really appreciate clarity in regulations. I, I frequently go before boards and commissions with plans and, and, and it's really frustrating to go into a town that is, is nebulous. And, uh, you're, you're going up against people that don't have any rules. And it, it's really frustrating. I'd much rather have, uh, clear contemporary rules that apply to the current conditions that we're operating in.
Thank you. Mike.
So I guess I need to restate a couple of things after Peter and Neil and Sue. I'm not as opposed to the specificity of the rules. I'm more concerned about what those that may be coming in front of us and have already come in front of us, what are their, what's their temperature on what we may be trying to do? And I look back at the Ag Zone, which was tried three years ago or two years ago and what was tried 15 years ago. And the board kind of got insulated and making, well, this is what we want to do. And the people showed up 15, six, 17 years ago now and showed up two years ago and said, that's not where we want it to go.
And the board listened.
Right. And the board did listen. And all we said is bring us in for that particular.
The process worked.
All I'm saying is the board spent a whole lot of time. And if they could have brought some of the stakeholders in early, it made, it might've made a huge difference. And it almost, if someone hadn't seen an ad in the Laconia Sun, it may have just gone through. And you had two or three people show up for a public hearing for something else. And it could have been passed because the voters just go and vote. So my thinking is shouldn't, we shouldn't fear, um, talking to the stakeholders early on in the process. We, we kind of, and you know, some of us on this board have probably heard of, you know, some rumblings about what the planning board is doing and where it's going. I'm sure there's a couple of us on this board that have heard some concerns. And it does seem like sometimes we get a little reactionary. And, um, now with what we tried to do with the Ag Zone, now we're seeing the, the paperwork that went out on the computer, uh, for our meeting today, that we want to, um, encourage, um, housing. Whereas just.
We'll get to that in a few minutes.
Right. But I'm just saying, it's a little reactionary at times and there are some rumblings. And it would be nice to see, to invite the stakeholders rather than a hearing and say, look, what would you like to see? What, what do you think? What's your feedback before we embark upon this process?
At this point, we have embarked on the process. Regardless of how we feel about the, how that process should take place, um, it has taken place. And I'm wondering if we should for September, um, hold a public hearing, get that feedback and see if we want to adopt these, um, regulations. Rebecca and then Neil.
I guess I just, I'm, I'm curious, Mike, what in, we're going through the site plan and review reg draft, the changes. What specifically do you think is going to be, I'm just wondering what changes are in, under, in your opinion, are going to be maybe something challenging for people to, to look at?
So my fee, my, my feeling is that it may all be great and there may not be any problems. I'm not an expert and I'm not coming in front of the board for those purposes. And it, it could be that there are specific things that they would like to see reserved that was already there. Because Plymouth, Plymouth is a pretty spectacular town. We've done some things pretty well in the past. And we've had some great planners over the years, some professional planners. And it's nice that June is, um, putting the energy that she is into this board, but I don't know. I have nothing specific to say. All I'm saying is it's nice to get the feedback early on before they feel like they're under the gun in a hearing situation. That's all I'm saying.
We have had two professionals drafting these in consultation with the board. And again, leaving aside whether we should or should not have public input early on in the process and how much, um, at this point, the process has taken place. It's kind of a moot point. And it seems like it's time to get some of that public input and have a public hearing and see what everyone has to think and then see if we want to adopt these, um, changes to our regulations. Neil.
There are towns that have very little transparency and very little regulations and very little enforcement of their, of what ordinances they have, but that's not Plymouth. Plymouth is a transparent community. We are wide open to anybody who's interested. They can come on Zoom. They can sit in those chairs. They're all welcome. And I, I believe that, um, this board is very receptive to the concerns of all the citizens in the town. And we'd like to see them. If they have something they want to say, uh, about their concerns, we want to hear it.
A suggestion perhaps, and I'm not sure if it's possible, but something maybe to discuss or consider. You had said when we started the meeting, hey, you know, be committed, which I hope we all are. But, uh, business wise, my schedule has been crazy. And I know for a fact I cannot make the next meeting as well because I won't be in town. My suggestion is when we notice, when the town notices for this public hearing, for these regulations, could we possibly say there will be two public hearings in case someone is out of town or can't physically be in a chair or can't make a Zoom or, I, I'm thinking maybe, um, you know, given this, it's just due or due diligence, perhaps two meetings, a guaranteed two meetings. The public may appreciate that. Does, what does the board feel about that?
I've got an idea.
I'd hate for someone to say, oh, I missed it, you know?
And see, that's kind of like where I was going. No one knew about the Ag Zone changes until the last minute when we caught, one of the folks saw an ad just barely. Because everybody's so caught up in their lives, right now it's, everybody's working a ton of hours. Everybody's busy and you stop 10 people in town. You say, hey, do you know what's going on with site plan regulations with the planning board? They're going to say, no, I have no clue. I mean, you could maybe, maybe survey a hundred people as you see them walking downtown. Probably not one person knows about these meetings. I don't know how many people are watching it online. I just don't know. Everybody's caught up with so many other things. And we had a couple of examples where no one knew anything. And then I spoke up and people showed up and some things changed possibly. And all I'm saying is if we could invite a couple of the stakeholders that we know could maybe give us some insight on what's going on, rather than the people sitting on this side, a couple from that side and say, yeah, we on the right track? And again, specificity is great and maybe we're on the right track in every, and we just need those kudos from those three or four people. And if they don't show up and they were invited, then hey, so we get it.
Two, two comments here. Um, first of all, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with that. On the other hand, the individuals who are drafting these revisions, um, have talked to many of these stakeholders, um, on numerous occasions and gotten feedback from them. They may not have said, hey, what do you think about our site, site plan regulations? But they have gone through the site plan regulations, you know, in their conversations of site plans. And so, no, it's not part of a public hearing, but those individuals I think are informed by some of the stakeholders and the conversations with stakeholders over the years. And my other comment, I've completely forgotten.
Yeah, I was just going to say the challenge of this. Well, this is, this is mostly procedural and it's how we want things packaged when it comes to us. So that we're getting all the information we need from the applicant. And this is our way of providing guidance for those individuals. It's, I mean, it's less regulatory than it is procedural.
This is my other, yeah, this is my other comment. If I think, if you ask people about changes, you, you mentioned like asking people in the street about changes to site plan regulations. I don't think most of them are all that concerned and are not as concerned about changes to the site plan regulations as they would be changes to zoning. Changes to zoning really changes things.
Which is why zoning goes to the.
Yes. Changes to site plan regulations just like guide us through the process of implementing that. And the, the stakes are a bit lower in terms of public impact. And to just, they, they help the process.
And I, I appreciate that. I, I get that. Sometimes it's just nice to get, yeah, keep up. You guys are doing a great job. Rather than just ourselves patting each other on the back. And it would, I don't think it's, it's something we should fear that we bring people in early in and be able for the, all the board members to get that same feedback that June possibly got. I don't know who she spoke to. I'm sure she did speak to others. She, that's what she did. That's her job. And she's very diligent at it and she's puts a, a lot of energy into it. It's much appreciated. But it'd be nice for the board to have a few people out there and say, hey, you know, what do you think about this part? What do you think about, you know, and that's all I'm saying.
What part though, sorry. What part, like what part in here? I guess I'm just wondering, I just see a lot of procedural stuff, like here's what we're looking for with stormwater. Here's what we're looking for, for design guidelines. What, what I'm, what I'm hearing is more of a reaction to change and not a reaction to the substance of what we've got in here. And to me that, that is less, it just feels less productive. So I'm just wondering what in particular, I mean, there's just a lot of tiny administrative changes in here that are really just, we moved this to this. We made sure that we're consistent in the naming of things. You know, there's a lot of boxes on the side that make it look like a lot of changes has happened, but, but we're really, we're, we're making the procedure so it's clearer for all applicants.
And we're not changing our zoning ordinance.
No, and I, and I appreciate what you said. And I, sometimes it's just nice and maybe they have a perspective on what we're, what our goals are and something that we haven't thought of. And again, I don't know any of the specifics. It's not my thing and to, as an applicant to come in. So.
So at this point, it sounds like we all agree, we want to hear from the public. And that might be one meeting, um, two, two meetings was, was floated, but we all agree, we want to hear from the public. And let's, instead of talking about whether or not we want to hear from the public and how the public might respond to this, let's talk about scheduling a public hearing and getting some feedback. So the, the soonest we could do a public hearing would be the second half of September. Is that correct?
The September 15th meeting?
We can actually do a, um, we could do it on, and meet the statute. I was checking the statute. We could actually do it September 1st and then the 15th if you want. We'd have a public, an ad in the paper. We're going to put it on the website and post it around town out for the first and then another one on the 15th.
And if the first seemed faster people, we'd have another one on the 15th anyway.
Correct.
I will not be able to be here on the first, but that's okay with, I mean, that's okay with me.
Are you talking about October 1st or September?
September.
And my suggestion would be in that hearing, you're get, you're asking for, you're proposing a document and you want, um, edits on that, changes to that document, specifics. This section should be worded this way or changed in this way. I also would like, encourage the board to consider that this is not just a document for the applicants. You're going to have to start doing findings of fact by state law starting next meeting. So this gives you the basis to review facts of an application and compare it to your design guidelines. If you go with this and be able to more clearly say yes or no to an application and avoid a court case. So this app, this document is as much written, this is written for the town to help the staff, help the planning board. And it's giving clarity to the process for all involved. It's not an app, a document written solely for them. It's not an app, a document written solely for them, and I think we should avoid us and them language. It's not a document written for just applicants, developers. It's written for the community. It's a community-based document to help all.
Thank you.
So when can we have a hearing?
You could have a hearing on September 1st and the 15th.
So we're getting into papers on time for the first as well?
And we would post it on the website, which meets the statutory guideline. And, and that would satisfy the, we don't have to put it in the paper. We would have it in the paper. It would be published on next week in the paper. We can get it in the morning, was our plan. It would be in the patent, the Record Enterprise, because that's what I've heard that this board would like to have it noticed in on September, August 25th for a hearing on the 1st and the 15th. It would also be on the town's website, and that's where people can go to download the document and review the new, the old and the new. They're not done to track changes of the old, they'd have to look at the old and compare it to the proposed.
And that's gonna be on the town website too.
You can get that on the town website probably.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure, Peter.
Is this just an open discussion thing, or do we have to do a motion and a vote? This is, this is just discussions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
How you want to proceed, yeah.
Okay.
I, that sounds good to me.
It's me. I would suggest if you do ask people what they think about what we're doing with the site plan regs, you ask if they know what site plan review is.
That's, that's true, because when I first walked into this, it was, I knew I've done it before, but it doesn't, just didn't connect.
There's, there is a disconnect between what we do here and the general knowledge of, of how things work here. And, sorry, may I say one more thing? Mike, I think you discount your skills and ability to review
Oh, thank you.
your site plan regs with your, no, I'm serious. Your, your experience, all of our experience on the board, your, however many years you've been on the board, you see applicants, you see where the confusion points are, you see where they're having trouble with things and where we're all like, well, we're not sure how this works, or where's the guidance here? So I think, I mean, the area, the expertise we have on this, at this table is really important to consider.
It, it is, but when you're done the meeting and you see some of the applicants around town or whatever, they don't always convey that in the meeting. They're very quiet about what they say. That's all I'm saying. And they may have something completely different in views that they want to express when it's just one board member. And that's all I'm saying. And we, and I, and hopefully that when we have this hearing, if there are folks that are in the business of doing it, not townspeople, because I don't expect many townspeople to show up, but there might be some people in the business that if it's something that they look at and see and see what's going on, they may want, who are not townspeople, may want to say something. I don't know.
And we'll find out in September.
As long as we're willing to listen to them as well as the townspeople, like you know, I'm sure you would. I'm just saying, who knows? And it could be that this is the best document the town has ever produced, and we're gonna have a parade and put June on our shoulders and parade her down Main Street. I don't know.
Another parade.
Do that anyway, but.
I already saw one parade.
I also would encourage the board, if you're going to have two hearings, that you listen at the first one and write down the comments, thank people, and then wait for the second, continue it to the second night, and then make a decision and not decide to make any changes after the first until you've heard everybody come in at the second. Because then when you have two hearings, there's a tendency to, oh, okay, we'll address that, and then it's something different for the second one.
Well, similar to our friends who didn't, haven't showed up for a year, there may be a roomful, there may be two. I mean, the second meeting.
You never, you never know.
You do never know. But in the spirit of that, the first and the 15th, that seems rushed to me. I mean, is there a reason we have to go bang bang? It'll be like 15th of September and mid-October? I mean, are we trying to beat some deadline?
We've been discussing these for several months at this point and
The public hasn't.
The public hasn't, and I mean, if after, you know, if after two meetings, there's a perceived need for more, we can always make that decision.
Can we hold off on answering that? Because I'm trying to find the statute and I'm struggling. Let me go downstairs and get my book that I think I can work clearly, because once you notice.
This book or a different book?
Yeah, that book.
Someone always has it.
I just need to stand up.
Here you go.
My back's killing me. Once you notice a change, amendments, if a new application comes in.
Oh, right.
I think it's under the new, I think it has the effect of having to follow the new one. So that's why you don't stretch this out for a long period of time. You have a hearing, you get the input, and then you either, you know, make edits and adopt or adopt without, you know, so that, that, or there is a reason. If you, if you have a hearing in September and then another one in October and November, and we get an application third week in October, which guy, which regulations does it fall under? I think it falls under the new. And I need to check that, so.
Well, we did just hear that there are no pre-applications, and our agenda hasn't exactly been on fire.
Right, it's a good time.
Yes. And Labor Day, Labor Day is on around the 1st when a lot of people travel, so I, I was just, I'm just advocating for not, you know, 45, 60 days, but maybe.
You see what I'm saying? I, I think I'd rather have one hearing and then if we had to have a second, if there was a major change to be done, then we make the changes, then you have a second hearing on the new revised things, rather than letting it sit out there for multiple days. I think that's.
Yes.
Labor Day?
Like the 4th or 3rd or something like that?
One, two, three, four, back to the 5th.
Okay, yeah. It's coming right, right up, right up.
Well, the first is Thursday.
Oh, the first is Thursday, of course, yeah, okay.
Was it 1:15 or 1:45?
I mean, the website helps, obviously.
You want to go with the first and the 15th, is that okay? Or do you want to?
I think that makes sense, and I think that keeps everything fresh and also keeps us from having too many meetings in between where we're tweaking it in between when, when, I think that's a good idea to not.
And if there are other issues we want to talk about, like that are on our agenda and otherwise, we're not juggling too many things at once, we can kind of.
You know, one of our highest priorities is to make sure that the public never feels embarrassed for asking a question. They don't know the answer. We might know it, we might not know the answer. But it, we don't want people to feel embarrassed because they asked a question. And, or not ask a question because they might feel embarrassed.
Is there, um, is there an issue or a problem with maybe having the first hearing September 15th? So we're not, everybody's going away, there's, there's just gonna be no one that's gonna want to show up if someone wanted to. It's a tough time.
That's why we're doing the two.
So September 15th, could that be the first one? Is there a problem with that?
I, I don't see any reason to prolong this when we have other things we also want to talk about this fall and rather than having long meetings, juggling multiple things, we'll kind of get some closure on that hopefully, unless there's a lot of like pushback against it. And then, you know, we can kind of shift focus. I mean, if we get pushback, then we'll keep talking about it. We'll see.
That's true. When the process starts, the process will take on life of its own. Could be ghost town like this. Bang, bang.
Okay.
No offense, Frank.
So.
What are we going with? I was still stuck in my.
First and 15th?
Thank you very much.
I, I'm good with the, well, I'm not here on the first, so I'm, I'm good with the first and the 15th.
Nor am I. So we got two people that won't be here on the first.
Correct.
I'd probably, that's not my favorite time of the year to be sitting here.
I'm willing to be sitting here one way or another. You will be sitting here one way or another.
I'm not gonna be here.
Hopefully the other ultimate show up.
Neil's not gonna be here.
I can't find the statute. I'm looking, I'm too tired. I can't find it, sort of. It is what it is.
We just start at September 15th, the first one?
Are you not gonna, you're not gonna be here?
I'm gonna be on Zoom.
Oh, you're gonna be on Zoom. So you'll be, you'll be at the meeting, but on Zoom?
Yeah, on the 15th.
On the first?
No, the 15th.
On the 15th, okay.
I'll be here on the first.
Okay. Yeah, I think first and 15th.
Again, then the first hearing, you would gather comments, and we can put them in the minutes for those that can't come. And then you digest those at the, you, you shouldn't be responding and we wouldn't be making any changes because if somebody can't come on the first, and they come on the 15th, or if they do come on the first, we want to let people, you know, have a chance to speak on both dates. That's the problem with having two hearings. You have to like, you can't really do anything on the first with the regulations. You're not gonna be voting to do anything to make any changes because you want to wait till that second one.
And so when it's noticed, you don't have to be here, right? You can write in?
Sure.
Okay. Not that I'm writing it, but I mean, someone.
You know what I mean? So I'm saying like on the first, if there's like a great support for this and everybody, you know, you wouldn't just say, oh, great. You would still say thank you. I don't, I wouldn't engage in conversation in response. You're just gathering comments. And we'll put them in bulleted, write them on a flip chart and put them in the minutes, and then you, you consider the comments you get in the first in conjunction with what you get on the 15th, and then make decisions about what you want to do with the regulations.
Yeah. All right then. First and 15th.
Sounds good.
Well done.
So next up on the agenda is the New Hampshire Housing Opportunity Planning Grants. So I'll, I'll turn it over in a moment or two, I think, to Joseph maybe, who might want to say a few words about the timeline and process. So these are New Hampshire grants, and they're focused on housing, but I, I think for us especially, they can also have a broader focus and perspective. We've talked a little bit about this already. So it would be housing as a more holistic, broad scoped consideration to how, so it's not just housing, but how it would fit into a broader kind of vision for Plymouth and hopefully addressing some of the concerns some people might have about considering housing. Another thing to consider in considering housing is, well, of course, again, to Mike's point often, you know, public input in the process and as broad a basis of public input and engagement as possible with people around town who might not ordinarily come to these meetings. And to think about, you know, housing is not a one-dimensional sort of thing. So if we have excess stock in one place, that does not mean it necessarily translates directly into another demographic of housing need. And so to have a pretty complex picture of what our housing needs are in this town and how that fits into the broader vision of the town. And to that effect, so it is a complex process. It is one that engages the public ideally very forthrightly. And Joseph, do you want to say a few words, or June, about the process of, and the different stages of application and simultaneous applications and all that sort of stuff I know you've been learning about?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it's a, you know, it's a new, you know, we've talked about this with the board at a couple of different meetings. This is what came out of the Invest 603, which came out of, you know, a lot of different discussions. But this is the final form that was decided upon for those grants that we've discussed. It is, like you said, it's, it's a really a multi-phase, multi-faceted sort of opportunity for funding. We can kind of think about it in a similar lens as the old municipal technical assistance grant from Plan New Hampshire. It's, it's sort of, you know, it's even being partially administered by Plan New Hampshire, so really, you know, the same people are involved. But it is a three, sort of, three-part application, three-part process. There's a sort of a needs assessment phase, there's a regulatory analysis phase, and a regulatory development phase. The expectation, you know, sort of our interpretation, our read on it is, you know, before you decide if you need to do anything with your regulations, you really should understand what your needs are of your community. You can, so the first phase we see is sort of, you know, doing demographics, studying our current housing stock, studying our current regulations, you know, looking at what sort of, in, working off some of the work of previous housing studies, previous work that's been done in Plymouth.
Master plan.
Yeah, the master plan, a lot of great data in there that I think, you know, this could allow us to just sort of continue to update and, and build off of that. The later phases, and it's sort of an interesting, it's a three-phase, you can apply for them all at once and then, you know, be awarded them either concurrently or in a phased manner. It's sort of, you know, they're, they're sort of working on it as they go to, but the applications are live, there's no match required, anything like that. But, so the first phase, you know, you, you do that sort of assessment. The second phase, sort of, I think they, they view it as sort of happening at the same time. It's, it's really a, you know, study the regulations, look at, you know, what you have, and is there anything that, you know, conflicts, anything that doesn't make sense, you know, anything that's out of date, not in conformity with current best practices? And that would be sort of a whole separate, whole separate document. They would have that sort of regulatory audit, they call it. So while the first phase is, you know, studying needs, the second phase would be auditing the regulations. And then the third phase, if it gets to that point, would look at the other two. It should be a holistic thing where it considers, you know, what works in your current regulatory system and what doesn't work. And then it looks at, you know, what might the needs be based on, you know, the study, the needs analysis phase. And then there is an option to use the funding to, you know, develop potential regulatory changes at that point. So it, it's really a, it's a pretty broad process. As you said, it does have that sort of component, you know, there's always a housing component, and you can look at zoning, master plan, subdivision regulations, and it, it really suggests that you call a lot upon the master plan. So we've looked at, you know, we've, we've started to look through the master plan, and we've looked at a lot of different things that have been done already in Plymouth and think, you know, there's opportunity here. And we're sort of hoping to hear if the board was interested in pursuing, what sort of, you know, if there were goals that the board would like to see accomplished in any, you know, any part of that process.
And just to clarify, of course, any regulatory recommendations that were made are non-binding. It's, you know, up to us and the town and the voters if they would be adopted. But they're just, you know, guidance for us as we try to puzzle through our own regulations and make the best of them. Yes, Peter.
Is this a municipal grant the town's gonna apply for?
Yep, the town, you know, if, we, you know, we're hoping to, you know, gain.
State grant, federal grant?
It's from the, it's from the state, you know, it's ARPA funds that's administered through New Hampshire Housing Finance and Plan New Hampshire, but it's administered through Bureau of Economic, BEA.
Oh, I have that, thank you.
So it's, it, it is a, it is federal ARPA money that's being, you know, funneled through the state as a part of the Invest New Hampshire Housing Fund. And this is the $5 million in municipal planning and zoning grants has morphed into this.
Is it, is it state, state employees that are doing this analysis, or is it a private company that we would contract through?
So you have a couple of options. You can either go with a, you know, consultant. So the state is gonna be putting out a list of pre-qualified consultants. There's also, you know, put out a RFQ, use a qualifications-based selection. Or you, communities are able to use their regional planning commission as well to, to conduct, you know, one or more of the phases of the process. So it, it would be, it wouldn't be the state necessarily conducting it, it would be, you know, up to us to have that process to select a qualified, you know, a qualified consultant to, to do any, you know, one or more of the phases.
Would the findings be something we would consider putting in our master plan?
I think that's definitely a goal. I think that's one of the goals that they would like to see, you know, something that can be useful to towns that, you know, have someone who can come in and, you know, you get whatever amount of money you're awarded, 25,000, 50,000, 100,000, to, you know, take a look into this in more depth, to study and put, you know, really beef up that housing section of the master plan, you know, housing study, different things like that. So I think that would be something they'd like to see.
By the time our next master plan comes out, we'd probably even have to update that again. But it would still help guide it, the process, yeah.
Where do we stand right now, the master plan?
2018 was the most recent one.
So I guess my question is, you know, applying for the grant is one thing, but administering into the federal funds, they're gonna have to get documented in some special way.
Yeah, but it's not being administered by a federal agency. It's federal funds that has gone to the state.
Okay, so it's, okay, okay.
And they've pushed it to New Hampshire Housing, who's pushing it to Plan New Hampshire, so it's gonna be probably the easiest.
Okay.
All right, application, best we can tell. They have got a lot of money and they are basically.
They have got a lot of money, and they are basically, put this together pretty quickly. And there's a lot of money available to have a consultant look at this. And we were actually thinking, we can have multiple consultants, like our town's attorney, to look at. One thought we had, if, you know, we've heard about possible changes at Tenney Mountain at some point. We don't even know what's sort of vested up there from the eighties.
Can you file more than one application?
We would put in one application that would say this is one of our goals, is to maybe do a review of some of the stuff in the basement. Might phrase it a little bit better than.
Pile it up, yeah.
You know, I mean, like, where else are we ever gonna get that time and ability to help something that could happen there? So we know when they come in, like, if somebody walked in with a building permit for the old foundations that are up there and wanted to, because they're falling apart, but said, "Can I build on this, take down this old foundation and put a new structure, is it vested or not?" I can't answer that question. It would take us days to try to figure that out, you know? Because we don't have a clear record-keeping and that kind of thing. So even just to help address some of those things, the infrastructure up there, like, what do we need them to do before they, if they wanted to build, you know, that kind of guidance for art, that corner of town would be really important. That would be a goal. We have to come up with goals. That would be one. Help us figure this out, you know?
We had these downtown walks earlier in the year, and we had a lot of interesting ideas and feedback, and visions of various people on the board, outside the board. And it's a lot to think about and juggle in terms of public opinion, and in terms of what's possible, and in terms of people who, like, aren't on the board, who might not be able to envision what these changes might even look like, and what their impacts might be. And this would be a lot of professional help in that process, and engaging the public in visualizing this potentially, and thinking about what the impacts would be holistically. So it's not just like housing and like, let's do it or not. Think about the broader impacts of that, which is obviously is a concern. And it's hard for the board to do that. And we'd have professionals to help us through that and potentially a much broader process. And in the end, if we don't, or we or the town voters don't, don't like the advice, if we go to the zoning phase or that phase, it's still up to us. And there's not a whole lot to lose, in my opinion.
I agree with that. I also think that, you know, we talk about public engagement a lot. And as a board, as volunteers, there's only so much we can do to engage and bring people here. Our staff are busy and can't necessarily facilitate additional meetings and get feedback. And, I mean, some of us are trained facilitators, but that's not necessarily our role here on the board. So to bring a consultant in whose job is to publicize events.
Post events, yeah.
And then bring people in. Their job is to listen to people and facilitate a conversation around housing. I think that, I think that will serve us in a way that we can't, we definitely can't do ourselves. So we've been trying.
And reach out as broadly as possible. I mean, we all have kind of circles of acquaintances and friends and people who we would bring in, which would also exclude other people. And to have a kind of independent professional come in who can bring in a broader swath of the public of Plymouth than any individual one of us could would be really valuable.
I'd say housing right now is a moving target, and, and we need all the help we can get.
Yeah, we, we don't know what's really going, I mean, we don't have any ability to track it in terms of time, our systems here. Like, how many units, housing units do we have in town?
So I guess, I, I, I'm not gonna answer that question.
I can tell you, the last couple of years, Joseph looked into this based on the building permits. What, nine houses from, from, building permits issued around two thousand, two thousand and one? Because there's a little bit of a lag time from a house to get, you know, a permit. Somebody buys a piece of land, gets a permit, builds a house, and then we capture that additional value in our tax revenue. It's, what was the number?
Yeah, it was from the, the nine that we were talking about in like twenty twenty. It was about one point seven million in additional assessed value.
Additional assessed value, above the cost of the land before, from nine houses alone. We added one point seven million in valuation to the town, which is pretty good. So what kinds of houses are being built? What's the value of them? What's the positive revenue impact from that, that kind of thing? And what's, what are the changes? We keep hearing there's fewer students living off campus. What's that meaning for our, our areas? And what kind, what can we do to help transition some of those properties back to single-family homes? Or, or better, better use of, of them?
Are we getting timed out?
Someone just called, called in.
So I guess one of our questions is then, you know, there are a lot of potential questions each one of us on the board could ask about housing right now and assumptions we could make. The question is, do we want planning staff, June and Joseph, to help put together a application to have these studies done? And to find out what the feedback is that we would get out of these? And to listen to the public, and engage the public, and see what they think about housing and all sorts of other related issues? And do we want that, that process to move forward?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I heard an echo.
How much money is available?
It's a, it's twenty-five thousand for the first phase, fifty for the second phase, and a hundred for the third phase. So altogether, up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand per municipality.
Blah, blah, blah. You could add staff, right?
We could, we could get some attorneys working. Some engineers we could hire. No, and we could hire, you know, I mean, we would, we, again, how we have to use qualified consultants either from their list. I, my biggest fear is who the consultants are gonna get snapped up, you know? We wanna have the right mix of team to help us with this. And the sooner we get something in, then we can hopefully beat other towns from picking the best.
When did it open and when does it close?
It opened last Friday, and it's rolling acceptance throughout, throughout next year, essentially. It's the deadline for each phase.
Till the money's gone, yeah. It has to be expended by whenever the date is, because it's ARPA money. They, as of two, it opened Friday. They didn't actually post it till very late Friday.
Yeah.
Very, very late Friday, like four o'clock.
Already got one application.
And on Tuesday at noon, they already had an application.
You guys are late.
I know. We've been working on other stuff.
Mike?
So I love the idea of feedback, and I think that's positive. Probably some of you don't remember the term or the name of the company that we hired probably seventeen years ago, Burnt Rock. That was a fiasco. So I caution us to make sure, there are some good planners out there, as June said, and there are some that probably aren't so great. And I love the, the term holistic approach, which I would think means looking at the tax base and the tax rate, and where everybody is now versus how the impact of housing is going to affect that. What kind of housing? How is it gonna, looking at the parking problems? So all those things are great. And I love the idea of June being able to have some help. Maybe they'll wear masks down in the basement to tabulate what's down there and somehow try and figure out what is down there and the date. So I love that idea too, and it's getting some help for you. I was poking around down there, and I found the original town charter. It was rolled up and it had a ribbon tied around it. I'm not kidding.
Are there any mice in it?
It was in a box.
Tucked in next to like a tricorn hat.
It was in a box.
That's pretty cool.
Wow, you just stuck it back, you stuck it back in some dusty corner, yeah.
So, so this, this sounds like a yay, let's like, let's go forward with this?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Andrew, do you need guidance as to if we want to apply for like the whole shebang, or?
What, we were thinking, yeah, we started to kind of work on a document, and maybe we can, you know, we've only had a couple days to figure out the asking for. So yes, if we can get some help from, you know, maybe John, if we can reach out in his chair, if that's okay.
Yeah.
To get some, another set of eyes working on it, that would be helpful, so.
Yeah, and one thing they did note, they, they made an extra point to note in the, in the webinar this week, was that if you apply for all three phases and you decide later on that you don't want one, they'll give the money to someone else. But if you apply for all three, you can sort of mark it for yourself before someone else gets to it.
If you guys want, still want help in any of the grant writing, I'm happy to help with that, so.
See if we can get a road out of it, too.
So we might wanna go for all three phases, just to get an allocation for it. So it's a good strategy. Even if we, we can always give it back. I mean, how many grants work like that? Apparently one. Okay, thanks, you guys.
Thank you. All right. Next up is letter C under item seven, the capital improvement program. And we don't have Phil here for an update, but what do you guys like to give? Oh, and we have to adopt as well once it's done, right?
Yeah, I'm actually, I decided, let's do a quick screen share for this. What the heck, it's only nine o'clock almost.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna give you, so the overview of this is, before I put it up there. The CIP committees met ten times maybe, a lot of hours into this. And Phil unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. He's done a great job chairing. In addition, the last month or so, Joseph and I have put a lot of time with Ann Abair, finance director in particular, to make some refinements in between the meetings of the committee. We've had two more evenings, including on this past Tuesday, help yourself to some cookies, where we had all the department heads come meet with the CIP committee to go over everything that had been put together. It's a very positive meeting. A few changes were made. And we feel like we've got something that will, is, is a capital improvements program ready to present on. So the process is that the board needs to review it. So we're gonna do that on September first on the agenda, all right? And we'll have the link to a giant Google sheet ready for you to look at in the next mailing. So you would click on it and have a chance to look at it, make it a, and then it's advised that we do do a public hearing. So we were thinking of also doing that on the fifteenth. So we could talk about it in more detail on the first and kind of go over it when Phil's available, but have the hearing on the fifteenth. On the capital improvement program, capital improvements program committee has adopted this version that is there. So it's more, it's not for this board to necessarily make changes to it. It's more to either, you know, gotta go, just kind of give an, hopefully, a understanding of what it is and recognition that, you know, work of the committee, which is under the planning board, and then it gets passed on to the advisory budget committee, select board, town clerk, and the state we have to file it with, for some, by statute. So the one thing that I would share with you just really quickly, even though you can't physically read this, I totally understand that. Joseph gets full credit for developing a massive Google sheet where each department was given a tab here on the bottom part, all right? So there's one for fire department, one for police. Again, you won't be able to read it. So department heads put input of their capital items, and it all fed into this giant summary sheet that, which is what's up here. So each department had their own input, and then, but they couldn't edit, like, police department couldn't edit the fire departments, you know, they had, they were locked to their own thing. Went and fed into this giant sheet when there's some hidden columns and things in here. We looked first at six years, ten years. We're kind of back at six years to try to look at over, about two hundred items on here, right? That the committee has gone through to kind of create a six-year plan for doing some funding. And we'll, we'll share with you, you know, I'm just giving you a sense of the massiveness of this thing. But it's been really fantastic to allow different people to edit it as a, as a live document. That Joseph really built this thing for us. And the town budget is gonna use sort of the same process too, which will be a huge help, so. More details to follow on it, but I just thought we'd share, share that so far, so.
Thank you.
Nice job.
It's been a good amount of work, but I think everybody felt last Tuesday night it was at a very good place. And it's a huge, the budget committee, two members of the budget committee were at the CIP meeting. Mike Courier's on the CIP committee, and they were very happy to have that. So hopefully the select board will agree.
Clarified.
Okay, next up is HB sixteen sixty-one and HB ten twenty-one. And if.
Five minutes are left.
You all want to, and give us a Cliff Notes version of these, and?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, two bills passed. We have made a couple of little updates at various points to the board about these. But there's a comprehensive guide out now, which you all have in front of you. Very broadly, there's now a training, you know, a sort of, I shouldn't say a training, a test you can take to get a certificate in the mail. It's completely optional. Your scores are not tracked. But if you're interested in taking it, you can do so, and you can get an emailed certificate. The other, you know, some of the bigger changes are to the timelines, but they're not really that significant. It's still sixty-five days to approve. If you're not gonna get it in sixty-five day, approve or deny. And if you're not gonna get an application decided in sixty-five days, you'll have to agree on an extension with the applicant. Or you now have the option to, if you lack the sufficient information, you can deny it without prejudice. Then they can just come back and submit it later with the requisite information. The written findings of fact are now required to be listed in a notice of decision. You can no longer ask the select board for an extension as well of the sixty-five day timeline. That's between you and the applicant to, to come up with that extension. There's a couple of changes made to TIF districts, which we, we no longer have operating. And there's also a, you know, HB ten twenty-one, which fundamentally says that no zoning ordinance or site plan review regulation shall prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures primarily used for religious purposes. So that's, that's a pretty, it's a pretty broad statute.
With a few caveats in there.
With a few, yeah. There's a few things that you can still regulate. And those are specifically for a religious institution, you can regulate height, yard size, lot area setbacks, and building coverage. So if we get an application from a, you know, from a religious institution, we would have to have them sign an affidavit, most likely, to certify that. And then, you know, they would be subject to a much sort of different process than a typical, typical application. But we haven't.
So a church could have like a junkyard? Or something that's explicitly not allowed, you know?
So they, they recommend that they have to use at least fifty-one percent of the area of the lot and/or structures for religious purposes, or at least fifty-one percent of the time used for religious purposes. It's true that there's not a definition of that in the statute, so.
Beaten-down car.
Yeah, we have a, we have a.
Forty-nine percent to do whatever.
Yeah, it's kind of an odd, there's definitely some, the attorney from the New Hampshire Municipal Association was on a web, webinar, trying to, you know, basically, there'll be some court cases to give better definition to.
It's more almost like on the flip side of things, when it no longer, the property's no longer owned by a religious institution that, yeah, I don't know.
If we get an application from a religious institution, we'll certainly.
Follow the process that they've outlined.
Follow the process, yeah. There's many things we can't control, but there's a few things you can still regulate, so. Stick to those.
Risk of building permitting and stuff like that.
Yeah, yep. Wetlands permits, they would still need you, that kind of thing, but, so.
All right.
Anyone have any questions about sixteen sixty-one or ten twenty-one? Did anyone take the test? We looked at it a little bit, so.
I have not.
It's optional, so no, no reason to or not to. But it is, you know, it's a good, good knowledge check if you want.
Do you guys take the test?
You can also take an anonymous option, if you don't wanna, you know, if you are concerned about privacy while taking the test, you can take the anonymous option, but you won't get a certificate that way.
We don't get a report, I don't think, because they don't track who took it, so.
It's like the first rung of the ladder, huh?
Okay, are there public comments?
I'd like to comment on two items of the meeting you had. One deals with that piece of property that had a subdivision that was incomplete. And when I raised my hand, I was just trying to inform the board about when you're dealing with RSA four seventy-seven colon one through fifty-six, which deals with deeds, property transfers. You have two types of notification. It's constructive notification, that's onsite visit of the particulars. And any.
It's constructive notification, that's onsite visit of the particulars, and any elements of construction or subdivision or any process of the property itself that can visibly be shown to the prospective buyer. And the other notification is legal notification at the time of turning papers, when you accept the property and what's recorded and stated in the deed and the conditions of the property of the deed at the time. That is the two elements that the courts deem, uh, so that if you purchase the property and then you've, uh, have not done due diligence, you have no recourse of law in a court because you failed to look at what you had the opportunity to look at. The other aspect on this new site plan review process that I'd like to speak to, and that is, uh, when all of the work that's been done in this board in the last forty years that I've been with it, um, I think one of the things that would help the mindset of the board members to transmit to this community, the citizens, is the intent and purpose of any particular part of our zoning ordinance. If you look at page one of our ordinance, the intent and purpose and the value of this board is orderly, uh, process and development of this town. And it does it in two parts. One part is to protect the citizens from injury, and we do that through four code systems, the fire codes, life safety codes, health codes, and sanitation codes. That is to protect the health and safety of the individuals. The second part, the intent and purpose of our regulations, is the preservation of our environment. That deals with land use codes, so you're not gonna find stormwater volume velocity index in the fire codes or health codes. That's not it, because that's dealing with the land itself, the environment. And I think with the current, um, element with our climate, regardless of where anybody thinks of it, we know that certain parts of the country are dealing with extreme shortages of groundwater. And a lot of the places don't have it. And the other part that they're doing, dealing with now is stormwater quality and trying to preserve that quality of runoff which they can use. And so people are becoming more aware of, um, stormwater quality, uh, for a regular home, homeowner. Uh, the Department Environmental Services has, uh, published, uh, books, magazines for the individual homeowner to have them deal with the various issues of developing a one-acre or two-acre lot for their home, that a non-engineered person could, um, understand how they can, um, put, get their house on their property. I think this, um, uh, site plan review upgrade, application upgrade, I think would, uh, go a long way with the citizens because of the new realization of our climate and the fact that we are so very lucky here in Plymouth in particular, in New Hampshire, because of our natural resources are still, uh, pretty much, uh, very nice, pleasant, where there's parts of the country's are not so. So I think the terminology, the word, the things, is understanding, uh, the intent and purpose of the regulations. Another thing I'd like to suggest, if you go online to the National Fire Protection Code System, all of those code systems have at the beginning page, the intent and purpose of those codes. And oddly enough, a lot of people don't know what the intent and purpose of the fire codes are, or life safety codes, or any of the other code systems. They can articulate, they cannot come up with a sentence to tell you what that code intent and purpose is for. And I think that would help a lot of you to, uh, when you're reviewing this and when you're looking over applications, is to think about the intent and purpose of this action. And I think this meeting tonight, I think, uh, people in town of Plymouth are in good hands, because this has been a very good meeting, uh, as a citizen, being very much a part of the planning board's operation last, uh, going on forty years that I've been here. So that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom at this point? Probably not.
You've gone to bed.
Is there anything else we'd like to do here?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.